considers all items on the consent calendar routine and enacts them in one motion. Commissioners or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. The only item on our consent calendar this evening is item A, approve Planning Commission minutes from our regular meeting, January 9th, 2024. Do any Planning Commissioners wish to pull the consent item, or does anyone else wish to pull this item? Judith?
Okay, keeping with my tradition of pulling the minutes. We love tradition. There was a bit of an oops in the, in the motion I made last time with regard to the commission's annual report. You all got that note from Fred Wise, who isn't here. I'm not really channeling him, but I did go and look at the report given to the city council and at the recording, and indeed, we did not vote to adopt, approve the amended, revised annual report. So I'd like to not approve these minutes and bring back the actual revised report in our packets at our next meeting so that we can formally approve that report or further amend it then.
Can I ask, point of clarity, can you remind me when the report is to be given?
I believe that Scott already presented it, and it was, the revised report was in the city council's packet. It was different enough from the version that we got, most of it better, that none of us have seen that in our packet, and so I'd like to get it in our packet, in its revised version, and formally approve, adopt it at our next meeting.
So you'd like to put off approval of these minutes until they reflect the report as was handed out to the city council?
No, we can, we, well, we could put that off, or we could amend these minutes to reflect the fact that we did not actually formally adopt that report, even though we did authorize you to present it, which was my bad, because I made it probably an ambiguous motion.
Does staff have a perspective on this, as far as the easiest way to resolve this?
I mean, the Planning Commission authorized the chair to modify the report, and so, and then they adopted it based on that modification, was my understanding. I, I saw a procedural challenge with what was being proposed at the last meeting, and I tried to air those concerns, and ultimately, the Planning Commission said, make, make, you know, these changes, these types of changes, and have the chair present it. The chair has presented it. That was the official Planning Commission annual report. And so, you know, certainly, if I misunderstood what the commission's intent was, we should modify this to reflect what the commission's intent was, but that's fully what I took from the meeting last time, so I'll leave it up to you all to...
Yeah, I think we made clear that we were gonna work to the suggestion and, and, you know, incorporate that language, which we did.
Absolutely, and, and just to be clear, I didn't, I mean, I added a couple of sentences for transitions, but, and this is what I was trying to convey, all of the information was already in the staff report. All I did was add headings for, this is what happened before, this is what happened next, or this is what we're proposing for next year. The annual report was effectively the exact same, with the addition of headings and maybe a couple of transition sentences. So I'll leave it up to the commission.
I, I already have said that the motion that I put forward was probably not what we might have intended. I would really like to have the amended annual report, not just in the city council's packet, but in the Planning Commission's packet, and I don't see any problem in, in adopting it next time and updating the minutes.
I don't think there's a problem bringing the report back if the commission wants to see it again, but you did authorize the adoption of that annual report at your last meeting. I mean, I will, I will stand corrected, I'd like to see maybe a straw poll real quick here, who thought they were approving the, the report with the authorization of the chair to modify it, based on the direction given by the, the commission, and then present that adopted report to the council. I mean, we certainly shouldn't have presented a report that was not adopted, I guess, is kind of my big concern.
Well, is there, are you, is there a specific motion you're making now, Judith? Because maybe we could see if there's a second and use that as a gauge to whether commissioners feel comfortable with what we did at our last meeting, or feel like we need to amend it in some way?
Yeah. I, I would move that we see the amended report at our next meeting, in our packet, and formally adopt it at that time. In the meantime, we can either, we can postpone adopting or approving these minutes, or amend them and approve them to reflect the fact that we will get that report next time. I guess that's a, that's, that's another bad motion. So I am moon that, I would move that we postpone both actions and take them at our next meeting.
We have a motion, is there a second for that motion?
I just have a question. If we brought it back, could it go on the consent calendar? And that way, it's really just a, like, a formality of, maybe the motion initially wasn't sufficient, and we didn't say on the record that we were adopting the report. We all felt we were, but for the record, maybe to bring it back on consent and just approve it there.
Yeah, I mean, I, this isn't that big of a deal, to, you know, stand on, on principle or process, you know, I'll follow whatever the commission wants to do. You, in fact, adopted the report at your last meeting, that's what the minutes reflect. Modifying these minutes to reflect something that didn't happen, or if I misunderstood to reflect that, you know, you know, those are sort of your choices.
We have a motion, so I'm looking either for a second or...
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, three to four, so motion fails. In that case, procedurally, I'm not sure where we are with that. Does that mean by default that the majority of the commission feels that we successfully addressed this at our last meeting?
If the city attorney does not believe that the way the motion, the motion was made is an issue, then I am happy to approve what we have here on the consent calendar for our minutes.
Go ahead, Peter.
I move that we approve the minutes that we have for last meeting.
Have we a motion to approve the meeting minutes from our last meeting? Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Have a, a motion and a second, all in favor of that?
Aye.
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 Okay.
No?
I'm gonna abstain, because I was not here at the last meeting.
Okay, still think we count a majority, so that motion passes, and we will approve the minutes from our last meeting. Okay, moving on then, we have no public hearings this evening, so we will move on to item six, business items, and we have two business items this evening. We will start with consider outstanding general plan recommendations, and as usual, we'll begin with a staff report on this matter. I think Jen is gonna inform us on this one.
We've got a couple of different components to the staff report, and if it's okay with the chair, I'd like to break them into sections, because each of them deals with something different, slightly differently.
Absolutely.
And so, just to set the stage, though, we've now published the December 12 general plan, Gateway Area Plan. By the end of the month, we'll have our, our code out, and then also, by the end of the month, we'll be circulating our environmental impact report for that work, so we can move into decisions. And as we mentioned last time, we'd like to bring some of the loose ends that have been hanging out for, you know, for the last couple of months to, to try and clean up. This is your first agenda item where we're doing that cleanup. What I'm gonna suggest we do is to go through the items one at a time, both in this meeting and in subsequent meetings, as we bring these forward, and keep track of straw polls that we will then, you know, for each of these agenda items, that we will then incorporate into the documents. And then, when you come back for your, your final recommendation, you know, after you've reviewed the, the EIR, and you're ready to make a, a final recommendation, we'll, we'll map those out and show you where they were incorporated or added, and, you know, what your vote was on what date. So that's generally what we're talking about doing here. The first topic is related to changes in the resource conservation element, which is in attachment B to your staff report. Attachment B was formally included as part of the staff report itself, and tracked some duplicative language in the general plan and the land use code. The general plan was adopted in 2000, and the land use code was adopted in 2008. The folks who were writing the 2000 general plan wanted to make sure that the policy was very explicit when it came to these resource conservation preservation measures, and so they wrote a whole bunch of detail about how you would actually implement the policy right into the policy. That detail was subsequently incorporated into the 2008 land use code, and so now it's in both places, land use code and general plan. What we've been recommending, and what the Environmental Services Department has recommended for several months now, and we just haven't got to it, is to make the changes shown and underline and strike out in attachment B to clean up the resource conservation element. Be happy to answer any questions, it seems pretty straightforward to me, but hoping to get a straw poll on that action.
Any commissioners have questions or comments about that staff report? Cleanup language, fairly straightforward, is everyone comfortable with that? Peter?
I just have a small editorial detail in RC-2B. The last four words should be stricken too. They just weren't, the EBA shall include, you don't need that.
Okay, sounds like everyone is comfortable with that. Can we move on to the next item?
Okay, so we have a couple of proposed land use amendments. I want to deal with them separately, because there really are different issues that are associated with them, and the, you know, the, the policy decision is slightly different between the two of them. The first is in the Mad River Business Park, and these are attachments C in your staff report, and I'll bring them up on the screen here. Here's Giantoli Lane, here's the Mad River Business Park. And the parcels that we're looking at here incorporate these two parcels, one is developed and one is undeveloped. And the proposal is to extend the commercial mixed-use zoning type, which was established as a base zone for all of the parcels south of Mad River Parkway East, to these two parcels. These parcels currently, under the development agreement that is on the property, that established the, the various uses, allow for the types of uses that are allowed for in commercial mixed use. And what the landowners are, are hoping to do is to be able to, you know, time their, their development, so that if it happens before or after their development agreement lapses, that they'll still be able to take advantage of those standards and provide the city of Arcata, you know, either a mix of commercial and residential, or to provide residential, as is authorized under the, the new commercial mixed-use standards. And so, staff is very favorable to this, this proposal, and would encourage the, the commission to go ahead and extend commercial mixed use to this one parcel that is currently industrial limited zoning.
Go ahead, Judith.
Yeah, I have a question about the rest of the Mad River Parkway base zoning. So I, I think I might have, Dan, Dan, were you on the planning commission when we adopted that development agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I think the two of us were probably the only ones who were here then, and I think most of us expected that by the time the development agreement lapsed, that the area would be developed. That hasn't come to pass, so I'm, before we extend that CM zoning, I'm wondering what happens to the rest of the land under that development agreement.
That, that's a good question. When the development agreement lapses, the base zoning returns to whatever the current zoning is, whatever is currently adopted. And so, right now, most of those parcels are industrial limited, zoned industrial limited. The city is proposing to zone them commercial mixed use, and so, the development agreement currently has it locked into the land use code as it was written at the time of the development agreement, so they're currently industrial limited. But through the development agreement and the planned development permit, there are also a whole lot of uses that were allowed, that aren't allowed in industrial limited zoning. And so, in effect, the change between what's allowed now, under the development agreement, and what would be allowed under commercial mixed use, is exactly the same for those parcels.
So I understand that the owners are concerned about what happens during a potentially very short period, but is the city intending, or is, is staff recommending changing the zoning on those industrial limited parcels as well? Or is there, I, I don't have the map right in front of me.
Yeah, no, we're not proposing to change any of the others. A couple of the parcels that are on the northern side here have already been developed for Can we get the screen up? One? Thank you. A couple of the parcels that are on the, north of Mad River Parkway East here, have already been developed for residential. There's one that has a proposal for more of an industrial limited use, and then, of course, tractor supply, and Dutch Brothers is developed over on this side. And then, there's, this parcel, I believe, is also currently designated for, for residential. So it's, it's really a mix in, you know, largely because of the planned development permit and, and the development agreement. It's a really, it's a mix of different uses within the area. And currently, these parcels north of Mad River Parkway East are all industrial limited, as the underlying base zoning, both in the development agreement and in the current land use code. The parcels that are over on the west side of the property are all still proposed to remain industrial limited. Most of them are gonna be developed by the time the development agreement lapses, if not all of them. And this is the only parcel, or set of parcels, that we're proposing to rezone for commercial mixed use.
Is there housing on any of the, on any of the parcels where an industrial limited base zone is still there?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Is there any housing on any of the parcels where the industrial limited base zone is still there?
Yes.
So they would then become non-conforming when the development agreement lapses?
Um, no, they were, they're, they're approved. They're legal conforming uses that were consistent with the development agreement at the time they were developed.
Right, but when the development agreement lapses...
They're still, they were still approved, they'll still be existing conforming legal parcels based, or uses based on the development agreement, the subdivision, and the planned development permit. So there's, there's lots of legal background to support those as legal uses.
Does anybody else have any questions for staff about this?
Just to remind us, these two parcels at the east end of this development agreement were already developed, correct? Before Zanzi did this whole subdivision, and the development agreement was brokered?
These over here?
No, the one with the red square and the one to the south of it.
Oh. I believe that's a true statement.
Yeah, yeah. I believe it is too. And they just got looped in with the development agreement based on the Zanzi application and all of that.
I think these parcels here are not part of the development agreement. I think that it comes out to this property here, and then encompasses this here. I think this one is excluded, these are excluded.
Okay.
Judith?
And, and what are, what are those directly across Mad River Parkway zoned, what is their base zoning? The ones that you just pointed to?
Across to the east or across to the west?
Uh, no, off to the right.
Okay, to the east?
No, on Carlson Park, the, the one, yeah, the, the, to the left of that? Yeah.
I am not positive off the top of my head, we can lo, we can find that out for you. I believe these are industrial limited also.
Okay, what, what I'm concerned about with this proposal would be the risk of spot zoning, and I think that's something that we don't want to encourage, and it does seem like if you're waiting to rezone other parcels as commercial mixed, when the development agreement expires, that, that should happen all together, rather than rezoning these isolated parcels?
Yeah, no, I, I don't think it could be classified as spot zoning. The, the properties, all of the properties on the south of Mad River Parkway East that are within the subdivision are proposed to be commercial mixed use in the future, and so it would be a natural extension of the commercial mixed use on the frontage to these parcels here, that are already proposed for a commercial mixed use type development.
Okay, I guess what I'm asking is, is, is that CM zoning to happen with our upcoming rezoning right now, or is that in the more distant future? In other words, would it just be extending that new zoning across the street, or would that parcel be sitting on its own?
No, it'd be extending the, the zoning across the street. These are currently commercial general, and so, they're proposed for commercial mixed. As you recall, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to eliminate commercial general, and absorb those uses into the commercial, central and commercial mixed use, and so this would be consistent with that decision.
Any other questions?
Yeah, are we taking action on this, or what's, what are you looking for?
We're looking to approve and just get consensus from the Planning Commission, that we're all comfortable with the proposal made by staff. Is anyone not comfortable with this proposal?
Just gonna, another question. I thought this was all for the land use element of the general plan update, it's not for immediate action right now. In other words, it would happen with the, with the adoption of the general plan and the zoning code, it wouldn't be an action that would happen before that. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct, but I'd, I'd like to get a straw poll now, so that we can incorporate those changes, knowing that we've got the, you know, recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Understood. Anyone object to these proposed changes that will occur officially at a future point? Okay. Approved, such as it is. Next item.
Okay, so the next property is also a land use redesignation. This property is off of, got too many keyboards in front of me. This property is off of Alliance and 30th Street. It's a vacant parcel of approximately two acres, it's in your documentation, I don't have it on the top of my head, but approximately two acres. It's currently zoned residential low density. All of the properties in this block off 30th Street are zoned residential low density. The only properties that truly have a development pattern that is approximating residential low density, and actually, the, the buildout is probably a little bit larger, is on these three parcels. This one is vacant, and is owned by this person here, so that approximates more of a, more closely to a residential very low, but this property could be developed in the future. I don't have the exact density of the Arcata Mobile Home Park, but it's probably at least residential medium density, if it were fully built, built out. You don't see the image, but this is the United Indian Health Project, and this one, it approximates residential medium to residential high. This one is also fairly densely developed. And so, what I'm asking you to consider is whether you want to propose to redesignate and ultimately rezone this property to residential medium density, and perhaps, if you wish to do that, that you consider redesignating this entire block residential medium density to, you know, reflect what's actually there now, and potentially to incentivize higher density of development in the future. This one, I think the policy question that I'm, that we're asking you to consider is, you know, it is one of the few fairly large parcels that has, you know, the potential for residential low-density type developments in the city of Arcata. I believe this could be 14, I wanna say it's 14 parcels. I think I'm confusing that with the, the proposed density. In any case, yeah, about 15, that's right, because it's seven and a half, 7.25 per acre, and this is about two acres, so it's about 15 units of single-family, and then with state density bonus, or, I'm sorry, state ADU law, this could be up to 29 units per acre with a, you know, pattern of two duplexes on each parcel. So there's, there's a lot of options in the parcel and its current configuration, current zoning. We do have a, you know, developers interested in developing this in more of a multifamily development type, and currently, the way it's zoned, the only way they'd be able to do that is to bring forward a planned development permit, to ask for variation of the single-family standards to produce, you know, a multifamily project. So at the end of the day, what you're weighing is, you know, do we want to reserve this for something that could approximate more of a for-sale ownership type, single-family development, or do we want to just bite the bullet and recognize the state is pushing us away from single-family zoning in the first place, and maybe allow them to, you know, develop more units for, you know, households that just wouldn't be for sale? With that, I'll turn it over.
Any questions or concerns from anyone on the commission?
Yeah, point of clarity, David, you said we could consider rezoning this entire block, and what did you mean by that?
Yeah, I think to Commissioner Mayor's comment before, you know, to do just this one parcel, if you're interested in doing just this one parcel, I'd recommend against it, because that is sort of a spot zoning approach. It, you know, it's, it's already leaning towards a higher density in the vicinity, so if you wanted to go this route, I would suggest that you rezone a, the entire block as residential medium or residential high even.
Can you outline what you mean by the entire block?
Yep. Yeah. So basically, what I would propose is along this property line, out to the UROC Indian Housing, and then back along the property line behind the Arcata Mobile Home Park, and encompassing this frontage. Alternatively, you know, if you wanted to retain these as single-family, you could start that line here, and just include what's already kind of, you know, basically residential medium density at the minimum already.
Go ahead, Judith.
Yeah, the, the front parcel on Alliance, what, what is the current zoning on that now?
This one here?
Yeah.
That is residential low.
Okay, and the, and the UROC housing in, in the back?
Residential low. This is all residential low.
Okay, and, and where does the ag land that's part of the conservation easement? Okay, and where does the ag land that's part of the conservation easement at United Indian Health start?
The conservation easement, did you say agricultural?
It had been zoned agricultural. It was changed for, I think, United Indian Health at some point, but I think some of it was under a conservation easement? Is that not correct?
I don't think it's agricultural. There's a stream setback. You can see the parcel lines here.
Okay.
There's a stream setback to those parcel lines. And this entire area was re, you know, was planted, it was landscaped with native vegetation and rehabilitated. And that is in conservation through that easement. It's not strictly a conservation easement, but it's a no build easement.
Okay, I guess what I'm concerned in rezoning that back portion for residential medium is our existing policy of gradual transition to green space, green wedges, green belt. But certainly, I think for that front block, probably would make sense to go RM for all of that.
All the way out to Alliance, Judith, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. So wherever David's cursor was, the first part that he outlined.
Go ahead, Peter.
David, can I ask what that parcel, which is now a grazing field, if I'm not mistaken, what's the zoning there? The one south?
That is, where the hand is here is agricultural exclusive. And this property actually has a Williamson Act contract on it. So it's dark green parcel.
So it will stay an agricultural parcel?
More than likely. I certainly won't be the one to say that it will change from agricultural.
So we do have that policy that calls for a gradual transition, which residential low is, but residential medium may not be.
I mean, when I look at the map, it looks like there's a mix of uses going on in there. It doesn't look neighborhoody, as it were, to me right now. I'm not sure what's going on in that front parcel on the corner of Alliance and 30th, but very little. I feel like that, I hear you on that concern, Judith, but in this instance, I don't share that, given the fact that the ag property, given what's going on around it already.
Another thing to consider is that this, you know, this does have a hundred foot no build setback. And that's basically the transition from a development that is basically 100% built out. The James Creek Meadows across the way, which, you know, has approximately the same type of setback, you know, approximate 100 foot from the creek here, is also residential medium. You know, we do have those transition policies and they're typically applied more strictly in areas on the, you know, outside boundaries of the city. But yeah, in this case, it would make no difference one way or the other because this property is already completely built out. So leave it residential low, make it residential medium, it won't change what's on the ground.
The purple line is a public trail, correct?
Correct.
Right through?
Yep, here's the new bridge.
And if you all haven't walked that, it's lovely back in there along the creek. It's a great walk.
All right, Matt?
I just haven't, I'll just say I'm strongly in favor of upzoning it, the whole block. You know, there's a bike lane on Alliance, seek a walk to Murphy's Market. I don't think that this is the, you know, the urban boundary of our city. Like, it's sort of surrounded on all sides by existing housing, so strongly in favor.
Okay. So we're really, we're not looking for a formal motion here, just more of a straw poll. So given that and the discussions we've had, show of hands in favor of upzoning?
All the way, wait, describe how much you want to up. Is it all the way to Alliance?
I mean, I think to avoid spot zoning and in conjunction with everything that's happening around it and staff's perspective, I would, I think it makes sense to upzone that whole block. That's, that would be my vote. Aye? Aye? Yes. So next item. I'm going to turn it over to Jen.
By the way, that, it's fascinating what the UROC housing project did. I don't know who designed this, but the street access end with this huge wide walkable path on the side and very narrow car lane, and then going right through into that creek and crossing the creek on that lovely bridge, it's all just really cool. It's like, feels like, wow, this is designing a walkable neighborhood right here.
I'm going to go check it out. I haven't walked all the way through there.
Your predecessors and the original project proponent designed that.
Who would that be?
I'd have to look at the original owners, but it was, this was back in 2007 when the original subdivision was designed. And they built, the UROC Indian Housing Authority built based on the original subdivision to streamline the environmental permitting.
Oh, so you mean even your predecessor in your position?
My predecessor, your predecessors, yeah. The wise people who were here back in 2007, which probably included Judith.
So we didn't make all this stuff up, huh?
No.
Okay, Jen, we're ready for you.
All right, sounds good. So we've been asked to bring forward some information about housing and homeownership and kind of highlight some of the ways that we can encourage homeownership. And the first thing, I guess, that I just wanted to point out, and David, I think, was going to team yet, but he did not, is that there's only so much that we can actually do as, you know, as a jurisdiction to encourage homeownership. We can't force ownership opportunities. We can't force people to buy homes. We can't force builders to build homes that are only going to be sold to the people who are going to be living in them. So just to highlight that, that there is only so much that we can do. I did want to talk about some of the things that we do right now. And there's a couple of different ways that we look at this. We have programs, projects that we've done in the past. We haven't done any recently, homeownership projects. And then there's zoning, and then there's some new state laws. So those are kind of the four different categories, so to speak, that we look at when we're looking at homeownership. One of the things that we've done historically for years and years and years and years is our homebuyer assistance program, which is targeted to low-income homebuyers. So that's one way that we assist, you know, really individual buyers getting into homes. And I know that's not so much what you guys are wanting to talk about. I know you're looking at, like, how can we develop additional housing that could be for sale? But it is something that's important to talk about because it's an important way that we, as a city, can, you know, we can work with our granting agencies to get funding for these types of programs. We've had that program in place for over 20 years, I would say. And in the last 10 years, we've assisted approximately three to four homebuyers every single year. So that's something that I think is a really great program. We've expanded it recently to a manufactured homeownership program. That's going to be something that's starting up soon. We got some grant funding from Calhome for that, which will assist some of our folks in parks. And then we have a new program with Moore, which is the mobile home program for rehabilitation, which can also assist with new homes if their existing mobile home is past the point of really being able to be rehabbed. So those are kind of a couple of the things that we're working on. Another program that we're in the process of creating, which our guidelines will be coming to city council here shortly, probably within the next few months, is a moderate income down payment assistance program. So I know that when I say these things like low income and moderate income, a lot of times people don't understand what that means. But a moderate income down payment assistance program would be 80% to 120% area median income. And so just to give you kind of a sense of what that is, for a family of four, that would be between $65,950 per year to $100,550. So it's more than just a low-income program. It's something that, you know, really could assist quite a few folks in our community be able to have a down payment so that they would be competitive in purchasing a home. So that's something that we're working on. It's not, we don't have our guidelines out yet, and city council will still have to approve those. But that's something that we've been, we've been talking as staff about creating. It's something that we think is a need in the community. Because coming up with that down payment can be really difficult. So as far as projects that we've done in the past, obviously, we've all talked about the community land trust program. That's something that we did somewhat in partnership with our, like, with different affordable housing rural communities is who they are now, but it was called Housing Humboldt in the past. We also have done a low-income homebuyer project. So that was San Piper Park, which is a mobile home park. Another one was the courtyard apartments with Danco. So those were townhomes that are, it was the third phase of the courtyard, that courtyard development. So those are townhomes that are owned. So those are a couple of different things we've done, projects in the past. We haven't had projects more recently, I think primarily because we haven't had redevelopment funds, and there hasn't been inclusionary zoning, where sometimes in the past, we were able to use inclusionary zoning to put those homes that were required to be affordable into the community land trust in partnership with Housing Humboldt. So we can look at that again if we do get inclusionary zoning. That could be something that we could do again in the future, if that's something, I know rural communities, that's not really their model. But if there were other options, that's something that we could really look at going forward. So right now, what we're looking at as far as zoning is really the community benefits program and encouraging owner-occupied affordable housing as an amenity, and then inclusionary zoning, and, you know, encouraging that moderate income ownership model that's been discussed. And then the state density bonus laws. As far as the state laws, there's a few different state laws. I can go over those if you would like some more information on them. I don't have all of the details. There are so many that came out in January, so we're still trying to sort through them. But there were three that I felt like were applicable to ownership and two I felt like were really interesting. SB 684, which is ministerial approval for small development, so small site development, it streamlines the approval process for homeownership developments by granting ministerial approval for projects up to 10 homes on qualifying lots. It went through those qualifying lots would need to be in multifamily neighborhoods, so that would be RM, RH zoning for us is kind of how we're seeing it, although we haven't fleshed that out entirely. The other one that was really interesting to me, and I don't know, you know, if this is a direction that council will want to go or not, but it's AB 1033, and that allows local jurisdictions to establish an ordinance that would allow for the sale of ADUs, so accessory dwelling units, as condos. It's very interesting. I'm not sure how it would work. I think there's a lot of details that would need to be fleshed out in order for that to work, but it's something that I think could really create ownership opportunities, especially for those people just starting out, looking to buy something small, just to get into the market. And I think that there probably would be people out there who would be interested in selling their ADU if they had the option to do that. So those are the two that I think were the most exciting. But I looked a little bit into it, and if, you know, as far as moderate income, who falls into that category? It's, you know, your teachers, EMTs, your medical assistants, a lot of your, you know, retail workers, general laborers, there's a lot of people who would fall into that category. So I think that that's, it's interesting to kind of look at that as far as who would that, who would that need meet? So happy to answer more questions if you guys have some.
I have a quick question, Jen. With the hypothetical possibility to sell an ADU, would that create a need for, like, a subdivision of the parcel? Or how would that actually work?
That is a fabulous question. Basically, it would create, from what I'm reading or what I've read, it creates a condo. So you're selling that condo, but there's a whole lot of detail in it that I think we would have to flesh out before we even got there. And the city would have to create an ordinance, which would detail out how that would work. One of the things that I read about the, like, the realtors, because they were definitely not in support of this in many ways, one of the difficulties that they think is going to be, how will the banks lend on those? And how would that work? But David, you want to?
Yeah, can I just call for a quick pause? I just was notified that our audio isn't working on Zoom, so I just want to check in and make sure that folks don't miss too much of the meeting. If you can give me just like a quick five-minute break?
Sure.
Okay.
Back at 6:27 or something? And we just finished our, getting our staff report from Jen, thank you very much. And so bridging into our discussion, curious if commissioners have questions about those different ways the city's working to address housing ownership opportunities? Go ahead, Matt.
Has the city ever looked at a Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act policy or ordinance? Is that something that's ever come up?
No, but it sounds like it's something interesting to look into.
Cool. I, I would recommend it as something to come back to in the future. It's, gives tenants sort of a right of first refusal when a multifamily building is up for sale to, you know, get together and purchase it and create like condos or a community land trust or something like that.
Yeah, that's really interesting. There's a similar provision in mobile home law, so yeah.
Is it something the city would have to adopt? I have a couple of questions, starting off with some of these state new laws. AB 1287 talks about the, in a building that has units for sale, that there's a required percentage that will be for different income categories. And I'm wondering if it means any units for sale in a building, like it doesn't have to be the entire building is housing units for sale. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
684 sounds really exciting in terms of, you know, kind of projects we're talking about around here. And it's the approval up to 10-unit housing projects on small sites. You mentioned, Jen, that if the City Council decides to adopt this, and I thought that state laws were, had to be adopted in some respect, is it just up to us to decide how it looks here or?
No, 684 isn't something that we would have to, as a city, approve or authorize with the ordinance. It's the other one, which is about the ADUs, being able to purchase ADUs. We would have to, as a city, for that particular one, we would opt-in is how, is how they worded that. So it was going to be something that each city had to do, and I think that they got a lot of pushback. I'm not, I don't know the details, but they did end up making it an opt-in. So we would have to create, as a city, our own ordinance, which would allow for, for ADUs to be purchased. So that's the other one. This, the 684 is something that we would be subject to, from my understanding at this point.
It's early on. I think that what we're learning here is that the state is like the city, like the Planning Commission, like the City Council, all interested in creating more opportunity for homeownership, but it's hard. So they're nudging it with some laws. The City of Arcata has been working on it for decades with lots of homeownership opportunities, but to specifically designate properties that have to be, whether they're in the gateway or anywhere else in the city, units for sale, isn't something that we can pull off. Is that roughly what I heard from you?
Yep, unless the city decided to purchase the land and then work with a developer to develop it ourselves with some type of funding, that is accurate.
Okay, all right. And we have done that, like with Sandpiper, right? That was, that was a good example of city participation in a development project absolutely for sale.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, that, you know, that is one creative idea. You know, one of the things that's great about working for the city is that we're a creative bunch and we're constantly coming up with new creative ideas. One was just floated today. And so I think that, you know, while we don't have the ability to regulate homeownership, we do have a lot of capacity for, you know, using the programs that Jen described and, you know, in our, our creativity and intelligence to create new programs in the future. And I think that's something that, you know, we're, we're committed to doing.
And sometimes it would be the city as a partner, sometimes it would be, well, less likely it would be code amendments, correct?
Yeah, I just don't see a code amendment, a regulation that requires homeownership. You know, if you take the example of all of the single-family housing stock that's been built in the last 15 years that went directly into the rental market and never had the op, option for, you know, for homeownership, you know, that's, that's an example of where our regulatory programs fall flat. We can tell you, you have to build this style of house. Under some limited circumstances, the state is attempting to do this with accessory dwelling unit law, we can say to you, you have to live in the place in order to, you know, take advantage of certain regulations or you have to rent this to a long-term tenant. The reality is that those are very burdensome regulatory programs that we just don't have the ability to manage and monitor, even if we had the, you know, the policy desire to do so. And so I think where we, where, you know, that, there's a lot of power to, to, you know, these regulatory programs, to laws that we can create as a city, but we can't do everything with them. And so where there are areas that, you know, our laws don't extend to, that we want to play in that policy area, we find these other programs to, to help, you know, facilitate that in our community.
I think one of the things that gets lost in this discussion about creating opportunities for homeownership is we, we think about that homeownership opportunity being created in areas where we're doing strategic infill, but as, you know, I've certainly learned as we've dug into it and talked more about it, one of the things that's, that's likely to happen is that as we build more density and more, you know, rental capacity elsewhere, it's going to free up some of our existing housing stock that already is single-family homes, but is being used as apartment-style renters that can kind of return back into homeownership opportunities. And I find that encouraging. I think for me, those net gain opportunities in the city as a whole are what's important. I don't specifically feel wed to them being created specifically in areas where we're doing strategic infill, although I would like that, just knowing that it's going to take some pressure off some of our existing housing stock in neighborhoods like Sunny Bray or wherever to come maybe out of the rental market and go back into homeownership is a positive thing.
Can I share one more thing that I didn't share with you originally?
Please.
That I thought might be helpful to understand is all of the people who enter into our first-time homebuyer program or our homebuyer assistance program, they're required to be owner-occupied for the life of their loan. So as long as they have a loan with the city, we monitor those every year. So we send out owner occupancy certifications every year that they have to sign and return back to us, and we go through that process annually. So that is another way where we're encouraging those particular buyers to stay in their home with that requirement, otherwise they would have to refinance or, or sell the home.
I, I guess just another topic related to this is short-term rentals. And, you know, we have a short-term rental cap, but you can go on Airbnb and see quite a lot of Airbnbs in the City of Arcata. And I guess one of the city's thoughts on, you know, enforcement and, and you talked about the like difficulty of regulating it, but I, it just feels like another opportunity for trying to create some more homeownership-type housing.
Yeah, I don't know the exact details of our current enforcement on short-stay rentals that are not in our regulatory program, but I know in the past we've contracted with a firm that basically finds those for us and then we, we initiate enforcement. So I'll make sure and bring that back to the Planning Commission at, at a hearing soon.
Anybody else have any comments on this housing creation discussion and the variety of efforts that our Arcata is continuing to do to encourage that?
I just also want to.
Put your mic on, Dan.
Sorry, thank you. I want to remind ourselves about the community amenity pro, part of the infill development that includes a benefit for homeownership, and we'll see if that plays out. I know we discussed it quite a bit and it, you know, it sounds great to me, but we'll see.
Good point. Okay, well, I don't think we're gearing towards a straw poll or a resolution here, just an opportunity to discuss this, the ongoing efforts. So what's next from the staff end?
Okay, just have one last item for you on this topic, and this is Attachment A in your staff report. And what we are looking at on the screen now is what's in Attachment A as well. This will be the tracking that we use to, to monitor the decisions that you're making and, and we'll include this in each of your packets coming up. I wanted to point out that I had also included in this packet several of the things that we've heard from the public, and I wanted the opportunity for the Planning Commission to weigh in on those if they had the desire to. We made a recommendation in the staff report on each of these topics, and I hope that I've conveyed correctly what the individual concerns were. I don't, unless the Planning Commission wants to go into detail on these, I don't think that we should take these up individually. You may want to go through them, you know, pretty quickly and say, you know, whether you agree with staff recommendation or not. If not, then we can put those on for a future discussion. But I've, I'm tracking that here on the screen as well.
So David, just to be clear, you're just looking for a straw poll from the Planning Commission to make these proposed changes as a, almost like consent items, as a, as a bulk adoption?
Yeah, if you, if you agree as a group with what I've written in the staff report and the staff recommendation for each of these, we'll record that. I know that the same comments have been coming to the City Council, so they'll be thinking about these as well. Deputy Director Dart did just point out that this line five was the 3028 Alliance land use designation that we just went over, and it said, change that to commercial mixed-use. We meant to say, change that to residential medium, so I fixed that in the table here.
Okay. Matt, go ahead.
I'd like to save implementation measure LU9 from the chopping block if possible.
Yeah, and the staff, staff recommendation is to keep LU9. The description here is what the public member said, to amend the sphere of influence. Staff is in support of that. We've heard it from the Planning Commission, we've heard it from the City Council as well. Previously, the sphere of influence was set, my understanding from conversations with LAFCO staff was that we weren't going to be able to amend it. I've had a follow-up conversation with them after some of the policy discussions, and they said they're open to the idea. So what I would suggest is that after we get through this major amendment to the general plan, that we go back and amend the sphere of influence to reduce the size for implementation measure LU9. Public member said we should delete it, staff recommends we keep it. For OS1E, they wanted to remove the last sentence was pulling it, which was pulling in the gateway policy that said, hey, let's take some of these, you know, desperate, really low-quality habitat areas, mitigate them into an area that has much higher habitat quality and preserve that in perpetuity, instead of trying to save every little mud hole. And I think that that was misunderstood by the public as maybe somehow denigrating the value of, of existing habitat areas. Staff strongly recommends that we keep that. In fact, it's the only place that I know of in our general plan that actually puts into policy something that we've put into practice for decades now when we mitigate wetlands because we're building a trail or because we're, you know, building a park or, you know, whatever the case may be, when we allow, you know, private development to go forward with mitigation. We don't actually have any policy backing currently in our, in our policy document that explicitly allows for that. There's, there's some that, that hints at it, but I think this statement is a clear statement of that policy. And then there's a community member who may speak to this tonight, actually, that talked about the Gateway Area Policy 7I, which is to retain Class 1 trails, no net loss. And we moved that into the general plan so that we talk about it more broadly in the city, no net loss without, throughout the city. And I believe what the public member was recommending is that we keep that in the gateway plan. Staff recommends we leave it the way that it is. It applies as equally in the gateway plan as it does in the city in its current recommended location. So that's a summary of those.
So staff is recommending everything except for Topic 7? Did I get that right?
We are recommending that we do not change seven through nine, that we do reduce the size of the sphere of influence, and then you've already weighed in on these ones.
Questions from commissioners regarding these proposals? That given, is everyone in favor of the proposed staff view on these items? Consensus?
Okay. I'll clean this up afterwards. Oh, wow, you're, you're growing. Let's see. Before you close this item, staff would recommend that you open public comment. Clearly, you've made a lot of decisions. I want the public to understand that these aren't final decisions and that you're still taking public comment and may change your decision before you make your final one.
Okay, got that. Thanks for the handoff. Appreciate the work on the business items, everyone. Next, we will, in fact, have public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes. Feel free to state your name for the record. Is there anyone waiting online to speak?
Yeah, we have at least one. Go ahead, Jim.
To staff, David, I am the one who actually would be commenting on GA 7I, but I, I believe my intention was misinterpreted because it's my intention to recommend that GA 7I be removed from the gateway draft because I feel that it conflicts directly with the, the linear park because it still strongly allows for the possibility of that trail to be moved in sections and most likely for road. And so my recommendation would be to remove GA 7I from the gateway draft, definitely not keep it in. And I, and the reincarnated that within the general plan, I believe, should be specific to continue to have, should have language to protect that, that section of the road and, like you say, the section of the trail along there and the future linear park. So just to clarify, yeah, my recommendation would be to remove GA 7I from the gateway draft, not to put it, to leave it in or put it back in. And yeah, and also keep, create some kind of language that clarifies that we're not talking about that, what would be the future Gray Redwood Trail, that that would be moved, you know, and also part of the postal trail. Anyway, that's about it. Thanks, good luck with everything else.
Thanks for your comments, Jim. Another speaker? Go ahead, Fred.
Yes, good evening, commissioners. First, I would like to note, there was no audio available to us for about the first 28 minutes of the meeting. Are we going to have the early oral communication perhaps at some point, given three or four or perhaps five minutes to speak? On this particular, please answer that question at the end. On this particular item, I strongly support everything the city has done to encourage homeownership. And as has been pointed out, it's easier to do it that way than to encourage developers. That said, community benefits that are there now, it's not clear to me whether the entire building needs to be owner-occupied or what. And so perhaps you can award the three points for as little as 20% of a building being owner-occupied. There's a style of construction that's three stories, which is our minimum in a gateway area, that has an upstairs-downstairs type of construction where there's homeownership on the floors two and three and a rental on the first floor. There could be some provision for this, so the, in a whole development, 50% of the units would be owner-occupied, 50% of them be for rent. In terms of the list of items that are purported to have come from the public on general plan policies, that is not all of them. And perhaps in the coming months, we can look at the other ones that aren't on that list. So in terms of the early oral communication, if the chair can tell me whether that's going to be opened up, seeing as there was no audio available to us for the first part of meeting. Thanks very much.
Thanks for your comments, Fred. We took oral communications at the beginning. We had one speaker here who's since left, so I'm not sure what we would accomplish by re, re-going through that again. Does staff? Does staff have a recommendation?
The question would be if people were online and wanted to raise their hand, did that get superseded by the problem, or?
Yeah, I mean, it's really, it's up to, it's up to you as the Chair to open it or not. It sounds like we had technical difficulties. There were, you know, several ways to participate, and, you know, folks who were participating in one of the ways weren't able to, to fully participate, so.
I mean, if there's any, if there's any speakers online that would like to take their turn at public comment, I'll allow that, given the fact that the audio dropped out.
Okay, so, yeah, so to fix the agenda, if you could just have a motion to modify the agenda to reopen the oral communications second, and a motion on that, then you can formally take more public comment.
I move to modify the agenda to take oral communications for matters not on the agenda at this point.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. If there's anyone online that would like to have their shot at oral communications on items not on our agenda, fire away.
We do have one.
Go ahead, Fred.
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Fire away.
Two questions. One, the Community Development Director has told the City Council that we'll be seeing a new draft of form-based code by the end of the month, the Gateway Code. Do you, as a commission, feel you have more or less completed the Gateway Code, and then it meets with your satisfaction? The, excuse me. Second, in the Gateway Code, in terms of the height, massing, minimum setbacks, and the eight-foot step back at the heights over fourth story, is the commission going to look at revising these design aspects for the buildings that would be constructed alongside our new L Street corridor linear park? Or is the commission content to allow what could be a canyon-like development along the L Street linear park, as the current draft of Gateway Plan would absolutely allow? Buildings constructed would block sunlight for all but two or three or four hours a day, even in the summertime, if tall buildings were built on both sides of the linear park. The, as we are aware, the commission cannot take action, that is, vote on items not on the agenda, but pursuant to the Brown Act, you tend to discuss, should any individual member wish to, a common discussion on these items. Discussion of six or seven minutes is considered by the court to be acceptable. As such, I request a discussion and a definitive answer to these two questions this evening. One, does the Planning Commission consider the Gateway Code to be completed? Two, does the commission intend to revise the height passing setbacks or upper-floor step backs for buildings along L Street to avoid creation of a canyon-like atmosphere on the linear park? There's two bonus questions to choose. Does the commission accept the July 11 Urban Field Studies Report that had so very many errors in it? And does the commission accept that we've never seen the planned area massing diagram that was called for in that $118,000 of funding 13 months ago, both of which would be very helpful in all of the design aspects of the Gateway? So my request again, some kind of a response tonight. Thanks very much.
Thanks for your comments, Fred. Appreciate that. David, is there anybody else waiting to comment?
Yep.
Go ahead, Patricia.
Um, yes. I will take the opportunity. I was going to speak earlier and was kind of frustrated because there was no audio. So I kind of was like, oh, forget it, I'm not going to speak. But since it came back up and Fred asked if we could do oral communications, I will take this opportunity. I ironically was going to do a short comment about the oral engagements or the oral communications. I know Chair Davies has been stating numerous times that the oral communications has been enhanced with, from, like, one example is going from the special meetings back to regular meetings to increase oral communications and opportunities for the public to be involved. I kind of take a little bit of issue with this, because the special meetings in, my view, were established, that whole series, where they actually, they eliminated the regular meetings, so it didn't give the public an opportunity to talk about things, like each item that was on the agenda wasn't opened up to public comment, and it was only eliminated to early oral communications, where we didn't know where the discussions were going to go later on in the meetings. And, and it, those special meetings were, it sounded like were formed because you wanted to change the hours and meet earlier, so you're, got, you were able to go home earlier. And, and then now those, now we're back to regular meetings with that same new time agenda. And also, things in the agenda packet, oral communications, the community isn't, they aren't listed on what the actual community talked about, and people phoned in and actually talked about, and the subject matter of what people were calling in about. So I, I think it kind of does a disservice to say that you enhance public communications, when in actuality, you stripped it and then gave us penance back, and that's what a lot of the community feels, and it's just a little frustrating. And unfortunately, I know it comes on the heels of not getting audio tonight, which was out of your hands, but anyhow, I just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments, Patricia. Are there any other commenters?
There are no more.
I appreciate everyone's comments. I would say briefly for the record that the reason we moved, and I proposed to move the meeting times to start earlier, is so that we could end earlier, because years of watching these meetings go to 9:30 and 10 o'clock at night, and seeing very little, if anything, productive getting done at the tail end of those meetings, as everyone's tired after long days. And then the reason we went to special meetings, just to revisit that, was because the council had given us a July 7 deadline to get the bulk of the recommendation on the Gateway Plan done, and we made a variety of concessions to our normal meeting schedule in order to increase our likelihood that we could get that job done. So appreciate everyone's comments, as always. And now we will move on to correspondence and communications. Do we have any correspondence from Planning Commission members this evening? Go ahead, Peter.
I have two brief ones. I just want to make people aware that the Ocean Protection Council just issued a draft State of California Sea Level Rise Guidance Document, and it's available on the OPC website, and it's very interesting, and I commend it to your attention. It's still a draft, but it's come a long way. And the second thing is, I, I had prepared comments on three items that were in that big matrix of items that were being shifted from the Gateway Plan to the general plan, and it didn't seem appropriate to do it at last meeting, and it didn't seem appropriate tonight. But David printed them out. I'm going to pass them out, and hopefully we can get to them next time.
Yeah, we would, I would like to, I know Judith also has some comments for our consideration, and my preference would be to agendize this so that the rest of the commission and the public has a chance to look at it ahead of time before we have a discussion about it. So appreciate that, you bringing that up again, Peter. Any other, Matt, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. So for those that don't know, I co-host a podcast called the ECO News Report. Our guest on the most recent episode was Professor Vicky Bean of NYU. She's a law professor who specializes in housing policy. She also served on the equivalent of the Planning Commission for the City of New York. And she has written a lot of papers about supply skepticism, trying to debunk this idea that adding new housing does not affect rental costs. And I thought it was a fun conversation, and I thought I might suggest you all listen.
Cool. Thanks for that, Matt. Any other oral communications? Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, today was Humboldt County's point-in-time count of houseless population, and people went out and screwed all the trails and woods and campsites all over the county, all over the nation, in the, in this 10-day ending of January every year. If you want to see results, the HUD Housing and Urban Development website tracks it all. It's all digitally put into the matrix, and you can look it all up year after year and get a sense of where we're at with, with that. It's fascinating stuff.
Important. Thanks for that, Dan. Peter?
One more thing. For those who haven't heard, Humboldt County received $427 million to develop the harbor for, eventually for wind power development.
Exciting.
Yeah, very.
Very exciting. Okay, do we have any correspondence from staff this evening?
I just wanted to convey to the Planning Commission that at the last City Council meeting, they took up inclusionary zoning. They're kind of going through the same process you are, where they're tying up loose ends on these, these planning documents. And they took your recommendation, your last recommendation on inclusionary zoning, for the most part, they reduced the trigger from 30 units to 15 units, but then otherwise took your recommendation of 3% for very low income, 6% for low income, and 10% for moderate income. So I just wanted to convey that back to you, that Planning Commission recommendation was conveyed to and adopted by the City Council.
Got it. Thanks for that. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.